Good evening. I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, February 26, 2019. Please rise for a moment of silence. The pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Leterno?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry?
Here.
And Chairman Servoni?
Here.
On to item three.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through C, E, and G through N.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Those items passed. Item four. There are two items removed from the consent agenda. The first is item 3D. Can we have a motion on that, please?
I move we accept the donation of funds in the amount of $45,000 from Eversource from the recreational trail project from the Wallingford Senior Center to the Community Lake area.
Moved, seconded by Councilor Leterno. Counselor Fishbein, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see Mr. Bultramitis in the audience. I believe he's here for this item if I could have the opportunity to ask him some questions.
Good evening, everybody. For your record, Rob Bultramitis, town engineer.
Hey, how are you, Rob?
I'm doing well, thank you.
So, the matter that's before us contemplates Eversource paying us $45,000, and I see in here that there was some sort of environmental issue somewhere. So, can you enlighten as to what's going on here?
Certainly, to the best I can. So, Eversource Energy was aware of our project because they are in a butter to the town property that the trail will be constructed on. They own the parcels at the corner of Washington and Silk Street. So, again, they were aware of the project as a butter as I've been in contact with them. So, almost a year ago, sometime last spring, I was approached by Eversource. I was asked if the town would consider taking a cash donation towards our project. So, of course, I jumped at that because that's an opportunity to offset our town share of the project. This is a project that will get constructed 80/20, 80% federal, 20% town share. So, this $45,000 will go to offset our town share. So, as I understand it, and I'm not completely privy to the environmental issues that Eversource faced, but as I understand it, not in this town and not in a town that abuts us, but there was some type of enforcement action by DEP against Eversource for whatever location, whatever town that happened in and whatever the issue was. As part of their consent orders, Eversource had to pick a project. DEP was essentially making them contribute $45,000 to what they call a supplemental environmental project. So, being a recreational trail through a wooded area, I think this resonated with Eversource to potentially be an acceptable environmental project for DEP. So, that's when I was asked, and DEP must have eventually said, "That will do." So, our project is actually written into the consent orders from DEP to Eversource to make a contribution to our project. And it is project-specific.
And are we the only town that is recipient of some sort of payment as a result of this issue?
Well, they only shared with me one page of their consent orders, page five of an unknown number. On that, it listed town of Wallingford $45,000. I did not see that there was another town getting a donation as part of these consent orders.
And as far as you know, what we are potentially going to be receiving here has nothing to do with an environmental concern in some town that has not been remedied. This is on top of that?
I don't know that. But, you know, being that there's consent orders, I'm sure whatever the issue for enforcement was, it doesn't go unchecked. I mean, this is just part of those final consent orders. I'm sure whatever it was has to be remedied.
So, do we have any present, and maybe Attorney Farrell would know because he works with the utilities, but I'm concerned when I saw this, because I know at times we have issues with Eversource, so we're engaging in some sort of collective contract, and now we have a payment. If I may, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Farrell or to the mayor, is there anything pending with Eversource that one could perhaps allege that we're taking a payment so that that matter is resolved?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So, Rob?
Not to my knowledge either.
Okay. Well, that's one of the things that jumped off the page at me, you know, when I saw that. And that's why, you know, one of the things I wanted to ask about. So, Rob, the project that this is supposed to go to was approved a long time ago, a good, maybe seven or eight years ago. I was up here, and if I recall correctly, at that time, it was about a $2 million project, and that it was one half by us, one half by the state.
Yeah. So, it was about a, it could have been, it could have been as high as a $2 million project. But as I mentioned, the prorated shares are 80% federal and 20% town. So?
Okay. All right. Maybe, okay, maybe it was the feds. That's fine. So, now it's 80/20. And the money, we put money aside for this project, you know, a while ago. And we might, do you know how much we put aside?
Yes, I do.
And how much was that?
I believe there were two appropriations, one for $1 million and another for $900,000.
Okay. So, almost $2 million. And at that time, the plan was to go around the, like, behind the White Way property and around what used to be the Community Lake?
Yeah. It was going to go behind the White Way property and come out to the sidewalk on Hall Avenue before the bridge over the Quinnipiac River.
And the project, to my knowledge, although it never came back to us to change it, has significantly changed?
There is no longer a component that would link this trail to the sidewalk at Hall Avenue through White Way. Correct. The town was just simply was not successful in negotiating an easement.
So, what is the projected cost of this project?
Well, it's actually more than projected at this point. We've actually bid the project, and we'll be signing a construction contract next week. So, the bid price for the project is about $1.36 million. We always want to be prepared for construction contingency. A general rule of thumb is 10% to 20%. We also have the services of a consulting, engineering, inspection firm that are required for the oversight to get that federal funding. The all-in projection at this point is about $1.7 million, so very close to the $1.9 that's appropriated.
But we are anticipating upon completion of that project that 80% of that we're going to get back?
Correct. But that's exactly how the project was funded, too. It was always predicated on a, so it wasn't necessarily $1 million of town money being appropriated. We always anticipated a revenue back into the cap non for the reimbursement.
Okay. And then I guess, so do you know how much we're projected to give back? I mean, a simple math, was it 80%, almost $2 million? So?
Right now, our out-of-pocket expense, I would calculate at about $300,000. So, you know, if we accept this donation, you know, we'd be in the 255 range, out-of-pocket, to complete the project.
Yeah. So, we would anticipate after the completion of the project that we'd get about 1.2?
Yeah, 1.3.
Yeah. Okay.
And? Just to clarify, I want everyone to understand, our appropriation is dependent upon the grant from the state. So, we did, the money showed in cap non assumes that we would have that 80% contribution.
But those are the feds?
Well, whoever, state, federal, whoever. It assumes that that money is coming from that source.
So, we don't have $2 million or 1.9 in cap non recurring?
Well, we do, but it's not cash. So, we're authorized to spend that much, but the cap non for those individual years would show 80% of that coming back in as a revenue, the reimbursement from the federal government.
We show it with a footnote that indicates that what amount of money will be coming from another source. If that money should not come in, we wouldn't be able to do the project.
But isn't it, it's a reimbursement. So, I mean?
But we're fronting the money, but it's dependent upon the money coming in. So, it's not like we're, we're not really spending town dollars.
Well, that's the intent, but my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to show completion of the project, which completion of the project would necessitate us paying, I would think, the contractors to do the work, and then upon the feds approving that paperwork, they would write us a check?
Yeah. Actually, I'll tell you, because I've gotten very good at this, quite frankly, and monthly, when we pay a contractor and we pay the inspection firm, I am compiling and sending an invoice to the state. They actually want to see them monthly rather than at the end of the project. So, the money starts coming in very quickly.
Okay.
But if I can go back and maybe answer, as I mentioned, the money we have to spend, it was actually appropriated over, you know, a couple different cap non years. But let's just say that it's $2 million in one year. We, the project didn't take all of the pilot money. What would have happened is we would have said, "Okay, 80% paid by the feds, 20% by the town, so $400,000, 20% of the $2 million would have been taken out of that pilot money." So, that's why I'm just trying to explain it. It's not all cash money from cap non. We anticipated the federal reimbursement as a revenue. So, for those years, we actually budgeted more in cap non than the pilot put in.
I think, and I think you're answering the question, because that's where I wanted to end up. When the money comes back, when we get the reimbursement, that goes into cap non or general?
Really goes into general because it's a general fund, and I'm going to let you answer.
It goes into cap non fund. It's a cap non fund revenue.
Okay. But it's, it's revenue that has no appropriation, so it just goes to that running balance of unappropriated or unexpended funds in cap non, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I know because of the requirements by DEEP that we can't appropriate this money for another project because it's already approved. It's deemed to be an environmental project. But at the completion, which, when do we anticipate this project being completed?
Well, we were going to start construction April 1, and the anticipated contract days were about 124, so just over three months. So, probably by the late part of the summer, project will be completed.
So, sometime in the next budget year, we would reasonably anticipate having this 1.2 million or there, 1.3 in cap non that's unexpended, unappropriated?
Well, it's not unexpended because, you know, in the cap non year that this was appropriated, you approved a cap non budget much larger than the cash that actually came in from the pilot program. So, in other words, if the pilot paid in $1.8 million, we approved, or you approved a cap non budget that might have been $3 million because you anticipated this revenue coming in to balance it?
Maybe I'm being dense here, but my understanding was, just to bring it down, there's $2 million, thereabouts, in cap non presently that is earmarked for this project?
Yes.
Okay. We anticipate within the next six months, we'll say a year, expending almost all of that money on this project?
Yes.
Yes. And then shortly thereafter, we expect a check coming from the feds to reimburse us for the 80%, and that money goes into cap non recurring?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay. Well, the mayor's looking at me like I'm crazy. I, just please.
The example would be we're spending $3 million in cap non. One point, let's say $2 million of it was coming from the federal or state government. We're only spending $1 million on the project. Let's say, cap non, the total was $3 million. This project was $2 million. We don't have $3 million coming into cap non to fund these projects unless we get the state money, state-federal money. Because we only have 1.9 million coming in from the electric division. So, all of the project is dependent upon new money, new revenue coming in on the state grant. There's a footnote on the cap non page that describes other sources of revenue to allow the total to be more than 1.9 million. So, it's, we're not finding new money. If we didn't receive that money from the federal government, we couldn't build the project.
But the only new money should be, if we, when we get this cash donation from Eversource, we will spend $45,000 less of what we previously appropriated in cap non. So, I would expect that there will be $45,000 left over in cap non that could perhaps be reapplied to future cap non as a new revenue source. I mean, that's the only difference here is by accepting this cash donation from Eversource, we're going to spend that much less than what we previously anticipated.
I'll drill down on this at budget time, but, okay. I got the answers. I'm going to continue to look, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Zandry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rob, hey, I just kind of want to circle back what I talked to you on the phone about the other day, because I think it'll help add to this a little bit. So, the, as you outlined, this $45,000 now coming in from Eversource comes off of our bottom line. In other words, in other words, the cash, the cash that we're committed to spend, this will come off our bottom line. And I also talked to you a little bit about that contingency amount. So, you had explained to me, and I kind of want to reiterate, just to make sure I'm on the same page, and then kind of like to let the folks here in the room and at home get a better understanding of that as well. When we put any project together, there's always a contingency amount, or cost overruns, problems, unforeseen issues, and so forth. Now, given an example here where we don't overrun, we complete on time, that we don't end up finding, you know, some sort of a pipeline we've got to work around or something, we could actually come in, and that, that money actually is money that we don't have to spend either. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, right now, how much is set aside for the contingency portion of this project?
So, as I mentioned, the bid came in at 1.361808, and we have figured in a 10% contingency on top of that.
So, about $130,000?
Correct.
So, how much is our out-of-pocket cost, forgetting, forgetting the $130 and forgetting the $45 for a second? Right now, out-of-pocket cost is what?
Okay. Well, so without any contingencies, the construction's 136. We also have the consultant inspection engineering firm I mentioned, that is about $130,000. So, that's going to put us basically at 1.5 million without contingency. 20% of that is $300,000. So, this $45,000 would make our $300,000 $255,000.
Right. So, if everything?
Out-of-pocket expense.
Out-of-pocket. So, if everything goes as planned, we don't have to tap contingency, and the total cost of this project is how much again?
Total cost with construction and inspection, no contingency, call it $1.5 million.
And we're getting that for two, potentially 255, provided there's no overrun?
If we accept the $45,000. Correct.
Right. If we accept the $45,000. So, we're getting all this work done for a fractional amount of money. That's really what I want to drive home here. We're getting a lot of this work done, and there's very little coming out of our tax dollars. I mean, there's something, there's?
Out of our town tax dollars.
Right. Out of our town tax dollars. The stuff that the people are putting in by way of their, their local taxes here, their property taxes and so forth. And so, I just kind of wanted to drive that point home. So, the federal government's going to be doing the 80% reimbursement. We're getting this $45,000. We've run without any problems, and that's the end result, about $255,000.
That's correct.
So, that, you know, that was just kind of a little bit of add-on. I got out of the conversation with you the other day, and I wanted to let the folks get a good understanding of that as well. Thanks a lot.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Questions or comments from the public? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leterno?
No.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bultramitis. On to 3F. Can we have a motion, please?
I move we approve a bid waiver for HQ Dumpsters and Recycling for a three-year extension of their existing contract at the residential disposal site holding the 7/119 prices.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. We have a representative from Public Works here. If you could come up, Mr. Palermo, and identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening. Steven Palermo, Superintendent of Public Works Department.
And Counselor Chortel, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. I just had some follow-up questions on this. I did talk to Henry McCully on Friday. I know he couldn't be here. And Henry said that HQ was a reliable vendor, reliable vendor, which is hard to come by in his experience, and that was one of the reasons to pursue this deal that it was offered. I guess some of my questions were around the, just some data. Do we have any similar pricing in other towns? Do we know if the deal that we are proposing to extend, is it a good deal relative to what other communities are paying? Is it in the middle? Is it?
I don't have anything from other towns. I do have some, some information from HQ. Prior to 2017, there was a $10 per ton rebate on recycling. As of right now, it costs $70 per ton to dispose of recycling, much more than it does to dispose of regular trash.
And that's free when you go there as a resident right now?
Correct. The recycling.
They're not charging for that?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I read in their, in the backup with the agenda, their letter mentioned that, mentioned the increase in cost, and so it seemed to imply that?
They're agreeing to hold their prices for another three years.
So, do you think they may, if, are they, if we don't do this, are they going to charge us, or charge residents for disposing of recycling, do you think?
When their bid expires, they, well, may. I think this could be a cost saving. It'll lock us in for three more years after '20, when the bid expires.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, just so everyone understands, we're talking about this next year, 1920, is part of their bid. They're talking about three years beyond that, holding it at the next year's price. So, we, if we don't waive the bid, we would have to bid it, and then it's anyone's guess what might happen. Our concern is the volatility in both the municipal solid waste and the recycling markets. And one of the components that they handle is the coupon drop-off for seniors, and this would keep the price of that the same for that period of time. So, there are a lot of components to this, but it is, given, again, the volatility, and now there doesn't seem to even be a market for recyclables, you know, we're, we're interested in the fact that this would provide that stability for, through '22, '23.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just wanted to get more in further. Bid waivers, I just like to talk through as an agenda item.
Few vendors come through here, Counselor, in my time here. This is one of our more reliable vendors. Very few complaints about them. Places need for a transfer station. Understandably, after a windstorm, yeah, they may get papers blown around. The next day, they're out there picking them up. They help our seniors. They're a very good, very good company.
I, I had to clean out my mom's house a few years ago, and I've been there a lot. So, I had a great experience, too. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Marone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Palermo, thanks for coming out. I guess I certainly get that they're a good company, and I've used the recycling center many times, and it's always tidy and, you know, nothing's overflowing with refuse or anything. So, I guess my concern is, as a councilman, it's hard for me to say that these prices are fair for the, for the marketplace, you know, or how would you know that if we put this to bid that we couldn't get a better offer somewhere else? So, I guess if you could speak to that a little bit, I would appreciate it.
I have the previous bid here. The last time this went out to bid, the bid was, the second lowest bidder was substantially higher.
I'm sorry?
The second, the next bidder was substantially higher, okay, than this. I don't want to give the numbers out, obviously, but it was substantially higher.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else from the council? Any questions, comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Leterno?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Servoni?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
On to item five, the public question and answer period. Mr. Morganstein?
Good evening. Larry Morganstein. Throw the chair to the mayor, please.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, at the last council meeting, you talked about phosphorus issue. I wanted to get some clarification on a number of things, so if you would. So, one of the things you said is that we're moving forward on this project, which makes sense. We're going on with the project. But you also added you wanted to evaluate and analyze ongoing. What does that even mean at this point? We're moving forward, but what is there to analyze and evaluate?
What other options we will have for the financial relief that is a major issue. I don't think this is affordable for the community. So, avenues of reducing the cost to the community, I think, are important to review, understand what other options we have, because I think there are a lot of people in town who'll find this to be a real strain, along with paying whatever increases there are in taxes or, or other utilities.
Now, we've been looking and analyzing this for, I don't know how many years. I know that when I talked to Mr. Adair back in 2016, he talked about how we had a lobbying effort where we hired a firm to lobby against us. And as of 2016, we had expended over $72,000 analyzing and evaluating and questioning. I'm not sure what's left on the table. We've, by your own admission, we're at a point now where, I believe you said it was $52 million. The state is going to give us back $20 million, leaving $32 million. Is that correct?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah. So, again, we've spent many years looking at this, and this is where we find ourselves. Now, you also talked about $140 to $150 on average. That would be a rate increase. Now, is that just for the phosphorus project? Is that for the $32 million?
The $52 million is primarily phosphorus. So, that, that is causing the $140 to $150 increase.
So that is causing the $140 to $150 increase.
Okay, so we also have upgrades to the water treatment and sewer facility to the cost of a 35 or 37 in addition. Is that correct?
I believe it's all sewer treatment, but it's 86 million, I think, in total.
Well, I thought the 86 was in addition, adding the phosphorus with those upgrades that have been done.
Right, if you add the 30 to the 52.
Okay. So if we're not talking about that 140 being part of that other upgrades, what's that cost going to be to ratepayers, or who's going to be paying that?
Well, that is, again, a concern. So if the additional 30 million is necessary, dealing with 140 becomes ever more important, because that will be a rate increase as well.
So we're looking at possibly at the 140 to 150, that would come out to like $12 monthly. Now, if you add on that 35 million onto the 32, that the state is not going to pick up, we're probably talking at about 300 on average, which would be roughly $25 per month.
That could be.
Yeah.
But the second project is several years out beyond the phosphorus, so the prices could be higher.
That's right. Which brings me to my final point on this, is that we've been at this for quite a long time. Again, we lobbied against it, you took positions to try to lower the standards, you questioned the science behind it. But back in 2016, when I corresponded with Mr. Adair, we were talking about 19 million. And I also have your testimony for a House bill that you were testifying at, where you quoted that in 2015, February 13th, you were talking about the capital cost of Wallingford being 15 to 19 million. That was your testimony at that time.
Those were the estimates at that time.
Yeah. So what have we gained by delaying this all these years? Other towns have already complied, are way ahead of us. What have we really gained in all these years? How have we helped the ratepayers by delaying these decisions?
Well, one gain we have is that it's a 50% reimbursement now, instead of what it had been earlier. I think it was more like 30%. So that's one gain. And we're not over-questioning it, because, once again, this is not a public health or safety issue. And my view is, on something that is not public health or safety, that if it's such a high priority for the state of Connecticut, they should come up with the money for it. Because the municipalities are strapped for cash, and we represent the people who are paying these bills. So someone has to be a voice for them.
Well, being a voice is one thing, but knowing when to say maybe enough is enough, when we're looking at a cost of 15 to 19, and getting even 30% reimbursement from the state compared to 52 million, and having to come up with 32 million, I think it gives one pause in thinking about whether all these years of lobbying, all these years of pushing back, are really, in the long run, been in the ratepayers' interest. It looks like our cost have gone up far greater in that time. And one would have to look at that decision-making as to whether that was really worth it to us in the long run.
Well, we see things very differently.
Well, the thing is, is that you can't deny that the cost from 15 to 19, with some reimbursement, is quite different from 52 million, getting it down to 32.
That's true, but that 15 to 19 million was not with the benefit of all the design. As a result of paying for the design, which I believe comes in at something, oh, I believe it's $500,000 for the design. More than that, but anyway.
Yeah, we're getting like...
Now, it's more accurate. So did we really know back then what the true figure was? That could have been a low figure offered by the state to encourage no one to say anything. I don't know. But I do know that whether it was then or now, I question the legitimacy of a program that is not tied to public health or public safety, and is an enormous cost to the public.
And again, there's disagreement on that. Obviously, people do feel that that science is worth it, but I'm not here to argue that. I'm here is just to point out the disparity over time, that we've taken to litigate this and talk about it, that cost have certainly looks like has risen considerably, and that in the long run, whether we've done ourselves a disservice by waiting so long. But I'll end with that on this. If I might, another question to the mayor, through the chair?
Sure.
If there is nobody else.
Does anybody else have a question or comment? Would you mind yielding?
No, not at all.
Come on up.
No, no.
Come on up. Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Kalia Haddock.
Into the mic, so that we're recording.
K-A-L-E-A-H. Haddock, like the fish. And you can put Choate Rosemary Hall for the address. Yeah, I'm a senior from Choate, and I'm doing a journalism project about the potential plastic bag ban, and if I have a local city level. So I just have a question, if anyone can answer. I'm curious if Wallingford is considering banning plastic bags, and if not, why?
So it has not, typically, something like that would come before the ordinance committee, and it has not come before the ordinance committee as of yet? And that doesn't mean that it can't, but no one has proposed it yet.
Okay. I don't know what's proposed it. I think that's it, but if anyone has any strong opinions against it, it'd be really helpful, too.
Typically, we don't, the council as a whole doesn't discuss things during the public question and answer period, because the way I view the FOI rules is that if there's going to be some type of council voter opinion expressed, then the public should be on notice that they're going to express it, and that item's not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgenstein.
Thank you. My second question through the chair, to the mayor, is about CMAC. It seems that there's an 89-page paper that's floating around, I think it was January 30th. Are you going to make any comment publicly about what we've learned from that settlement, which, when you go through it, it certainly seems that a lot of the rulings, or at least a majority of the rulings, seem to be not in our favor?
I have seen no ruling, and I'm not aware that there's a ruling that has been issued.
When they say motions denied in WED's favor, or they say this motion is denied in CMACs, I mean, those are rulings of a sort.
Those, to a large degree, were interim rulings, and I don't think they are as meaningful as you might think, but I'll let the town attorney...
There's nothing really final yet, and the law department looks at it as it's still ongoing litigation. We expect that some final rulings will be coming down soon. People are still making arguments to the arbitrator, and I just soon leave it at that. There's nothing to be gained by the town at this point by commenting on the ongoing Rather leave the arbitrator to make his decision without our comments being public.
So to follow up on that, there was a PUC workshop in which they talked about this, and in their minutes, I just want to read a quote from the minutes. PUC chair or member, Mr. Bernie, said, "We cannot allow our contracts to go to arbitration. It is a waste of money and a waste of time." He emphasized the judicial system is not perfect, but it works. He said this arbitration did not work for an entire host of reasons. He said that these ongoing interim rulings only give this arbitrator a paycheck, and expressed this frustration. Chair Beaumont agreed with Mr. Bernie and noted that is a problem. Mr. Brianbold also agreed with Mr. Bernie. Was there at any time before we went to arbitration that we had an offer on the table from CMAC, when it was just our lawyers with them before we went to arbitration?
No.
It never got that far. There was never an offer.
There was some mediation, but there was never anything offered publicly. They really didn't want to share figures with us, and in fact, took the position that they weren't going to give us the figures, and there wasn't any way we could get those figures out of them. That's basically what their pre-arbitration position was. They kept up that position into the arbitration, and the arbitrator ruled against them and made them disclose the figures.
Now, at this point, since it's ongoing, that means that we're still paying our lawyers? We're still expending monies?
They're not working for free.
Yeah. So in this upcoming budget, are we needing to budget more money than we already have had put in?
That's up to the PUC.
And what is the total expenditure so far? I've heard anywhere from the 2 millions to up to 3 million.
I think it's somewhere in between. I think it's about 2.5 million total, counting experts, attorneys, and arbitration fee, bind transcripts, et cetera.
I guess, again, I would just wonder, you know, what have we gained after all these years?
I don't expect that we're going to lose money on the entire thing, and part of what you gain is the knowledge of how people who were our partners in two ongoing projects handle their business.
Yeah, sometimes learning comes at a cost, I guess. Thank you.
It does. And one thing that just hasn't made the paper, but the PUC chose not to go forward with the 50 and 5 project. We've been out of that project since December 31st of 2018.
I do believe I did see that somewhere in a paper, or maybe...
Did you? I missed it. I did go over and tell the reporter for the Meriden Record that that had happened, so I'm happy to hear that it was in the paper. I didn't see...
Well, somewhere I've heard that. I assume that was the paper.
Okay.
Maybe I'm error on that.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will close the public question and answer period and move on to item six. Can we have a motion, please?
I move we approve the revised job description of Personnel Clerk to Human Resource Assistance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Good evening, Mr. Hut.
Good evening, councilors. Jim Hut, Town Human Resources Director. I'm here tonight to seek your approval on a revised job description for Personnel Clerk. What I'm looking to do with this position, which is now vacant, is looking to expand the role of the position to, you know, make it more involved in the Human Resources responsibilities that we have in the office. I've indicated that on the job description that I provided to the council. Essentially, what I'm trying to do is, you know, the work of an organization is accomplished through its people, and I'm looking to develop the staff necessary to achieve that in the future. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, as a result of the change in the job description duties, do you foresee a change in the pay scale? I'm not sure if I noted that.
Yes, I did. I did include that in my memo. I'm looking to increase the pay grade from pay grade seven at $20.59 an hour to $25 an hour, to pay grade nine, which is 22.37 to 26.78. The reason why is that I looked at the clerical classifications across the town and found that this position that I am looking to fill is pretty reflective. Internally, it's consistent with the secretary and the senior clerk position that's in the 1183 bargaining unit, and so that's where I slotted it at pay grade nine. It's very similar in terms of the wage scale.
And I do say correctly, you did put that in your memorandum, which covered the job description. And did I understand correctly from you, you just said that this job is outside the bargaining unit?
That's correct. It's non-bargaining. It's a highly responsible confidential position. Primarily, the position has functioned in the past as the pension clerk, so when someone, you know, retires from the town, they have to be accurate with their figures, they have to pay attention to detail. So it's a highly, there's some very detailed oriented skills that are needed in the position.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Any other questions from the council? Councilors Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So just real quick, just for me, you said this is already a vacated position, so we do, I presume we budgeted for it, to fill it, but we haven't filled it yet.
Well, the position was filled in this fiscal year. I had a vacancy, an employee left the department to be promoted into another division, into the Public Works Department. So that created the vacancy. So the money's budgeted. I'm not looking to increase the salary range at the moment. I'm looking at what I currently have for the balance of the fiscal year is sufficient to cover the cost at the rate that I'm looking, you know, to hire somebody, so...
And that was basically where I was going. Even if you picked somebody up tomorrow for the role, there's been enough time that the role hasn't been filled, there's probably buffered up the difference anyway this fiscal year.
That's correct.
And then going forward, you would just have to budget appropriately if this is approved to that new pay grade?
Correct. So normally, the way that a step increase would work in the town is that after two years, the individual would move to the next step. So I wouldn't even be looking to see a salary increase in this position until maybe fiscal year 2021, I think.
And over the entire, an entirely full year, even at that point, the differential you outlined here is it basically was an increase of about $3,200 per year?
Correct. That would be at the current...
But again, even like you just mentioned, they might not even start at that rate, they might be below that rate.
That's correct.
And the, all the remaining benefits are, they're the same. It's not like this person gets anything more than they would at one grade or the other, so that's all the same.
There would be. If it's a new hire that I select, they would be covered under the town's new cash balance plan for retirement, so there would be a projected savings to the town in that regard.
So actually, an externally hired individual would actually compute out to a savings?
Correct.
And then, this is based on a 40-hour work week, too, as well?
It's a 35-hour work week.
35, so we're paying them 35 hours. It's hourly and not salary?
That's correct.
So, all right, so we're paying 35 hours at the new grade, and they would be subject to regular overtime rules, then what, at above 35 or 40 hours?
No, they would be subject, their overtime past 35 hours would be straight time pay, and it wouldn't go to time and a half until after 40 hours.
Okay, so that five-hour buffer there, even if they had to work a little extra, is still at straight time until it hits 40?
That's correct.
All right, those are all important things to know. So, I mean, it's a very minor differential, and you're actually asking it in the sense of the new responsibilities that the role would be taking is more in line with being able to bring in talent that could handle it.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any other questions, comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Laterno.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Sivoni.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Hut. The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
There being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed can stay. Any opposed can stay.